So will Westport's special town meeting please come to order? Would all please rise and join me in sealing the flag. I pledge allegiance Thank you and thanks for coming. And I want to thank all the people that volunteered to help make this happen. There are too many of them to list them all, and I would likely forget some anyway, but thanks to school department, police, fire, all the volunteers and the school students. Appreciate it very much. So what we're going to do today is go over a couple of What we're going to do today is go through a couple of preliminaries, just explaining a few things about how the meeting works, and then we will act on the articles of the warrant. So, we are the town's legislature. We're just like senators or congresspersons. We decide how our town spends its money, we decide the bylaws that will dictate the way we live, we have several powers and responsibilities. All of those are included, the particular issues that we're going to act on today are all included in the warrant. So we're going to act on all the articles within the town meeting warrant. Now, a warrant article asks a question. There are lots of possible answers to the question. You will see in your warrant booklet, the motions that were arranged in advance, that are going to be our starting point for answering that question. So someone will come to a microphone, when I call the article, someone will come to a microphone, and they'll read what you see in your warrant, with a couple of little exceptions that I'll explain to you when they come up. We'll then ask for a second, we'll get a recommendation from the finance committee, and then we will discuss it. When we enter discussion, everyone is welcome to speak, please come to the microphone in the center there and make a six-foot spaced line going back, and we will all speak in turn. When we speak, we want to first wait to be recognized by me. Please begin by stating your name, and then speak only to what we're talking about at the time. That's one of the things that allows us to get through our business efficiently, is that we talk about one thing at a time, we don't stray off into other topics. A couple of rules about speaking, no personal speech, we don't mention anyone else by name. So, the artful town meeting attendee, when they want to talk about the person who just spoke, said, says "the previous speaker," rather than saying so-and-so. Once we get into discussion, everyone can speak on, anyone can speak on the question before us, and they can speak as many times as they like, but no one gets a second turn until everybody who wants a first turn has had theirs. We limit speech to five minutes, those of you who've been here for a few times before know that that's probably too long. By three minutes, no one remembers what you said in your first minute. So, and that will be enforced. We do allow presentations that run 10 minutes, provided they are supported by, normally when we're indoors, a PowerPoint presentation, in this situation, by a handout. We operate under a set of rules here that cover other things besides speech, and while there are lots of them, and you don't want to know them all, they basically boil down to four things. We're polite, we only deal with one thing at a time, nobody gets an unfair advantage, and we move things along as fast as we can without sacrificing the other three. So, the motion that we get is our starting place for an answer to the question that the article proposes. Now, the meeting may be happy with that answer, and may vote to adopt it, but we may want to change that answer, we want, we might want to propose a different answer. So that would be an amendment to that motion. So, anyone in the gathering is welcome to make an amendment, you would step to a microphone and say, "I move to amend the motion by blah blah blah." If that amendment is really quick, simple, easy, involves a word or two, or a number, you can simply make it from there. If it's going to be more complex than that, I have to ask you to write it down and bring it up to me. In trying to decide how to vote on the questions before you, you may want information that you don't have available, and so you're welcome to step to a microphone and propose a question to anyone who might be able to provide you that information. We have town council, we have our selectmen, we have the finance committee, we have our town administrator, there are lots of people who can help us decide the things that we need to decide. But bitter experience has taught us that having two people talk back and forth between each other in a meeting, sometimes devolves into trouble quickly. So we have kind of an awkward, but really helpful procedure for asking questions. If, for example, you wanted to know what color socks town council is wearing, you would say, "Mr. Moderator, through you I have a question for town council." And I would say, "What is your question?" And you would say, "What color socks is he wearing?" And I would turn to town council and I would say, "What color socks are you wearing?" And he would say, "Through you, Mr. Moderator, they are whatever color they are," and we would continue. It seems kind of awkward, but once you get used to it, and you see the alternative, you'll realize that it's a good way to proceed. And then, one other request for those who answer questions, sticking to that principle that no one gets an unfair advantage, if I was to speak for five minutes, and then someone was to ask me a yes or no question, and then I was to go on answering that question for another 10 minutes, I would be getting kind of an unfair advantage. So, if you ask a question, and you're nice enough to answer for us, I would ask you to just answer the question as briefly and concisely as you can. There are two situations in which someone from anywhere can rise up and interrupt a speaker. The first is a point of order, and that would be a situation in which you think that the meeting is being conducted incorrectly, or in violation of its rules. That has happened many times in the past, it will happen many times in the future. I hope it doesn't happen today, but I'm explaining this in case it does. What you would do in that situation is you would come to a microphone, or rise at your seat and say loud enough, "Mr. Moderator, I rise to a point of order." I would ask you what your point of order is, you would tell me what you think is wrong with what's going on. If I agree with you, we will modify the proceedings accordingly. If, in my judgment, we are within bounds, we'll continue the way we were. The other is a point of privilege, which is anything that interferes with your ability to participate effectively in the meeting. So, people next to you are talking too loudly, you can't hear what's going on, although I think with these speaker system, it's unlikely anybody's going to miss anything auditory. But anything that interferes with your ability to participate in the meeting, you would rise to a point of privilege, and we will do whatever we can to rectify the problem so that you can participate. So, to kind of warm up our voting muscles, I'm going to ask the meeting to address a couple of procedural motions. I'm going to ask if someone would offer some motion, that this meeting dispense with the reading of the warrant, and of the constable's return of service of that warrant, and that the moderator not be required to read warrant articles verbatim, but may refer to them by number and subject matter. This spares you having me read all these articles word for word. Is there, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor will please raise their pink cards. Thank you. Those opposed, raise your pink cards. That is carried. So that's how we do it. Second, we're going to address one question today that requires a two-thirds majority, and if we adopt the motion that I'm going to ask for, it will spare me having to count, even if it's obviously two-thirds. So I'm going to ask for a motion, that if a two-thirds vote is required by statute, the moderator be authorized to declare a two-thirds vote in the same manner as the majority vote is declared, provided however, that if a vote so declared is immediately questioned by seven or more voters, the moderator shall verify it by taking account. Motion and a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor will please raise their pink cards. Those opposed? That is carried. Okay, that was practice, here comes the real thing. Article one, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, and/or transfer from available funds a sum of money to repair the Westport Elementary School roof as described in the article, sponsored by the school department. And Mr. Carrero, will you offer us a long motion?
I move the town vote to appropriate $4,510,537 for the purpose of paying the cost of repairing the roof of the Westport Elementary School at 380 Old County Road, Westport, Mass., including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, which proposed repair project would materially extend the useful life of the school, and preserve an asset that otherwise is capable of supporting the required educational program, and for which the town may be eligible for a school construction grant from the Massachusetts School Billing Authority, MSBA, said amount to be expended under the direction of the Board of Selectmen. To meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approved, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen is authorized to borrow said amount under Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and issue bonds and notes of the town therefore. The town acknowledges that the MSBA's grant is, grant program is not an entitlement, discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA and any project costs that the town incurs in excess of, any grant approved and received by the MSBA shall be sole responsibility of the town. Provided further that any grant the town may receive from the MSBA for the project shall not exceed the lesser of, one, 48.27% of eligible approved project costs, and determined by the MSBA, or, two, the total maximum grant amount as determined by the MSBA, and that the amount of the borrowing authority pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the project funding agreement, that may be executed between the town and MSBA. No amount shall be borrowed or expended pursuant to this vote until the town shall have voted to exclude the amounts required to repay the principal and interest on a borrowing for the purpose from the limitations on local property tax set forth in Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Section 21(c), also known as Proposition Two and a Half. Further, any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, shall be applied to the payment of costs approved hereunder in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing by a like amount the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs.
Is there a second? So we have a motion and a second, may I have the finance committee's recommendation, please?
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee affirms, recommends affirmative action unanimously nine to zero on the following, on the motion.
Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion?
Hi, my name is Marilyn Pease. I'm concerned about the amount of money that's listed here for borrowing, that this $4 million grant, or $4.5 million grant, is in addition to the $97 million we're already borrowing for the new school. The potential tax increase that we were sold at the time when the town voted on that amount of $97 million debt exclusion, the potential tax increase was based on $59 million. Now, unless we are told to double that tax increase at this time, because we borrowed $97 million, and it's all going to be used up for the new school, or there's money to be left over that could be applied to this roof repair, to the, to the tune of about $40 million or $37 million. I mean, that's a drop in, this $4.5 million repair cost is actually a drop in the bucket when you look at the potential $50, $37 million that's going to be left over from the new school project.
Is that a question that you would like to-
Yes, I, my question is, since we are potentially going to have $37 million left over, and from the 30, from the $97 million we've already borrowed for the new school project, why can't that left over money be applied to this roof repair?
I can answer that for you. Town meeting appropriates money, which means we define the purposes for which the town is authorized to spend money. We have, the town meeting has authorized the town to spend that amount of money on building a new high school. We are now considering whether to authorize the town to spend money for the, the elementary school roof. We can't, that which was appropriated for another purpose cannot be moved to a different purpose without a vote at town meeting.
Okay, based on what you just said, in annual town meeting of 2019, the town, the town voted to buy the campground with money provided from a debt inclusion-
Okay, bring that back to what we're talking about now.
As I am, I'm using it as an example from what you just said. The money for a debt inclusion is based on borrowing from the town budget in order to pay for the campground. That money in the town budget, of course, is already meant for various departments and needs. Now, allow me to speak on this, that due to level funding, budget cuts, and the current pandemic crisis, of course, those budgets are bare-boned financed, and apparently, the robbing from Peter to pay Paul notion of paying for the campground, isn't working out too well. So, if we can apply a debt inclusion to pay for the campground, why can't we use the so-called leftover money for the new school appropriation, be it $37 million? Why can't we take $4.5 million from that and apply it to this new roof? And by the way, it says a repair, which is it? Is it a repair, or is it a new roof?
Steve, may I ask?
So, the answer to the first part of your question is, we can't do that for the reasons that I just explained.
Right.
And, but, as far as, is it a repair or a replacement, Mr. Carrero?
May I ask a question through you, Mr. Moderator?
Uh, she has the floor now, so, so you want to get an answer to the question, is it a repair or a replacement?
Right, because a repair-
Oh, okay, is there someone who can offer us an answer to that, Mr. King?
It's the same thing.
It's the same thing, it doublespeak in other words.
Repair or replace is the same thing.
A repair is the same thing as a new roof. Well, in my book, repair means one thing, and a new roof means something else, and if we're talking about borrowing 400, 4.5 million dollars, that would make a huge difference as far as what work is actually going to be done. How can you expect this body to vote on something if, if out of one side of your mouth you're calling it a repair, and out of the other side of your mouth you're calling it a new roof? Because people who are going to go to the polls, and probably see another no-dollar amount when they go, they're not going to see this $4.5 million, I assume, because it's going to be the same technique that you use to get your $97 million for the new school. So they're not going to see the $4.5 million listed. Some people are going to think, is it a repair, or is it going to be a new roof? Which is it going to be? So, I think you've got to clarify, either put the $4.5 million on the ballot question when we vote in November, or make it clear right here and now, and are we going to have money left over from the new school project? Because why should we even be voting for $4.5 million if we're going to have money left? And I know what you said, that that money is for the new school, but it's still money left over, supposedly, potentially, that we, that why, why should we be voting for $4.5 million, and putting us more into debt? That's what I'm saying. Oh, and one more question, too. We all know about carrots and sticks.
Yes.
We all know about, excuse me, I'm actually-
Excuse me, she has the right to interrupt a speaker with a point of order? You, you are correct, and it was my mistake in failing to start a stopwatch, so I was about to tell her that she has 15 seconds left. I'm going to grant her a little more because it was my mistake, but you are absolutely correct in your point of order. So, you have another 15 seconds on your five minutes.
Thank you for the interruption. Okay, so we have, we have issues here. Repair or replace, the $4.5 million, $37 million left over from the original money that we borrowed, that you say is only for that project, a debt, a tax increase based on-
Thank you, your time is expired, please be seated, thank you. Sir?
Thank you, my name is Lawrence Holesworth, I live on Fallon Drive. Mr. Moderator, I, I have some questions about, the, the previous speaker made a number of assertions about amounts for this, amounts for that, and about leftover amounts, and so on and so forth. I believe a number of those statements were factually incorrect. Could someone from the school building committee, or some other authority, address those questions? And specifically, the notion that there is, that the town borrowed $97 million for that project, and that there will be $37 million left over? I believe that is totally incorrect. Could someone confirm or deny that, please?
Well, on our principle that we only deal with one thing at a time, right now, we're trying to decide if we want to appropriate $4.5 million to repair slash replace, and by the way, that, that language in that motion was written by bond counsel, so we don't get to decide whether it says repair or replace, that's what they say. But, we're trying to address that, and I think the previous speaker strayed off into some areas that aren't really that germane to this. So, I'm going to decline to pass that question, I, not, not, it's, it's a valid question, but do you feel like it's necessary for you to have answers to that, in order for you to decide how to vote on Article One?
For me personally, no, but I think it has muddied the waters in the consideration of this question.
Okay.
And that's, then hence why I raised the issue.
Okay, so, so what's, what's the first question you would like to ask?
So, my, my, my question is, can we get clarif, for the sake of considering the motion before us, the article before us, and considering the appropriation of this $4.5 million to, to fix the roof on the Westport Elementary School, which is in dire need thereof, could we get clarification on the budgeting for the current new middle high school project, and specifically whether there would be leftover money from that project that could be used to, to fund this, rather than the debt exclusion?
Well, but, but I can answer that for you, because no, it can't. Town meeting appropriated that money for a new high school, that's the only place it can be spent. If it isn't all spent there, it'll revert back to the town in another form, to be appropriated in another way by town meeting, but it cannot be used for another purpose.
Thank you.
Mr. Viera, I think, behind the mask?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, I'm Anton Viera. I'm just standing in support of this, and I'd ask town meeting to support this article. If you've been to the elementary school, that's why it's on the, article is on the agenda. This is separate from the school that we're building, the new middle elementary, middle high school, this is a separate item. And I think maybe the, the selectmen might be able to help clarify this, because I think it's just procedurally, I think we actually went through this once before, if you walked in the building, and you've seen the five-gallon pails catching the water, that's not new. But I think there has to be a timeframe when it goes before town meeting, and it also goes to the ballot, that's why it's back on here again, but maybe the selectmen could clarify it. Either way, we need to support this, and we need to move on. It's certainly in need, it's separate from the other situation altogether. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion of the motion under Article One? Mr. Carrero?
So on behalf of the finance committee, we voted unanimous on this project, and I think what our, our whole idea on this was, do we want to spend $4 million now for a roof, or another $80 million for a brand-new school, two to three years, or four years down the line? For us, this is an investment in, in, in the town, an investment in the schools, this could end up being a structural problem, if it isn't already, and we don't want to be in a position where, as the previous speaker had mentioned, we are now spending $100 million on a project where we could have taken care of it, for a lot less money.
Thank you. Mr. Valcourt? No one gets to speak a second time until everyone who wants to speak a first time has had a chance.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to call the question.
Okay, a, a motion to call the question gives the meeting an opportunity to decide whether it has heard enough discussion on this question, or if you want to hear more. So, I'm going to ask for a vote, and a yes vote means that you have heard enough, you are prepared to make a vote, to vote yes or no on the motion under Article One. A no vote means that you would like to hear more discussion, because you have not gathered enough information to make your decision. Is everyone clear on that? Okay, so, all those in favor of calling the question and ending discussion, will please raise their pink cards. And those opposed will please raise theirs. That is carried by a clear two-thirds majority. So we now proceed to a vote on the motion under Article One. So at this point, we are actually voting the motion. So, a yes vote means that you would agree with, have the town do what the motion proposes, and no vote means that you would not. So all those in favor of the motion under Article One will please raise their pink cards. Those opposed? That is carried by a clear two-thirds majority. Article Two, to see if the town will vote to amend the vote taken under Article Two of the 2020 Annual Town Meeting, by raising and appropriating to various line items within the current appropriations, such sums of money necessary to supplement the budgets of various departments for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2020, and/or take any other action relative thereto, sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Carrero, will you offer some motion, please? Although, before I ask for the motion, I, I'm going to tell you that we, we arrange these motions in advance, and sometimes, when things are printed, we discover we need to make a couple of changes. So you'll notice that the, the motion is going to identify a couple of small changes from what you see under the article, but the corrected list of proposed transfers and expenditures is on the next page. So, Mr. Carrero?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town amend the appropriations listed in the warrant under Article Two, from the dollar amounts voted under Article Two of the 2020 Annual Town Meeting, which are listed under the column headed "from," to amounts listed in the column headed "to," with the following exceptions. Replace the dollar amount $3,228,252 in the "to" column, from police wages and salaries, with the dollar amount $3,228,258. Replace the dollar amount $2,039,80 in the "to" column, for fire department, wages and salaries, with the dollar amount $2,039,680. Replace the dollar amounts $353,114 in the "from" column, and $390,614 in the "to" column, for highway department, wages and salaries, with the dollar amounts $562,268 and $599,768, respectively. Additional funding of $989,674 from taxation.
Thank you, is there a second? We have a motion and a second, may I have the finance committee's recommendation, please?
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends affirmative action unanimously eight to zero on the motion.
Thank you. So, this is a multiple-line item article, and we have a little different procedure for dealing with these. I'm going to read each of these lines one at a time. If you agree with that, and would vote yes to that, please remain silent. If you would vote no, if you have a question about it, if you want to discuss it, please say "hold" loudly enough for me to hear you. We'll run through all the line items, we'll then vote those that don't have a hold, so we dispose of them, then we'll return to any line item with a hold, and address it, discuss it, and vote it. Reserve fund, from $50,000 to $68,910. Assessors' wages and salaries, from $2,003,252 to $223,252.
Mr. Moderator, correction, $203,252.
Oh, I'm sorry, apparently I made an error in assessors, $203,252 to $223,252. Information technology and expenses, $228,415 to $238,415. Planning board wages and salaries, $140,373 to $185,373. Planning board expenses, $30,890 to $50,890. Town hall annex expenses, for $114,800 to $134,800. Police department wages and salaries, from $3,88,851 to $3,228,258. Thank you, hold noted. Fire department wages and salaries, $1,960,680 to $2,039,680. Hold noted. Animal control officer wages and salaries, $57,900 to $65,811. Shellfish wages and salaries, $52,001 to $62,171. Parking tickets expenses, fifty, $5,100 to $10,050. Westport Community Schools, $18,590,895 to $19,096,102.
Mr. Moderator, correction, $19 million?
Let me read those again, apparently I made an error. $18,590,895 to $19,096,102. Okay, hold noted. Highway department wages and salaries, $562,268 to $599,768. Cemetery department wages and salaries, $155,020 to $160,020. Board of Health wages and salaries, $326,023 to $350,014. Council on Aging wages and salaries, $162,724 to $100,000. $326,023 to $350,014. Council on Aging wages and salaries, $162,724 to $177,360. Library wages and salaries, $238,800 to $241,792. Unemployment expenses, $125,000 to $150,000. So, hearing no discussion on all the line items except police department, fire department, and community schools, is there any further discussion on those line items that have no hold? Seeing none, all those in favor of the line items with no hold will please raise their pink cards. Thank you. Those opposed? That is carried. So we now return to police department wages and salaries. The motion is to amend it from $3,000, $3, 888,851 to $3,228,258. Is there someone who would like to speak to that?
Mr. Moderator, I am David Toth from Meadow Brook Lane.
I'm having difficulty hearing you.
Mr. Moderator, I am David Toth from Meadow Brook Lane. A number of the departments have priorities that are not being funded at this point, and I believe the budget set aside for the police could be better allocated towards those priorities, particularly the Council on Aging, library, and the school system. That's all.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Viera?
I apologize for rising again, Mr. Moderator. I'm sure people don't want to listen to me again, but I have to speak on, on this, and I hope the town meeting recognizes what we're talking about here. We're still underfunding our public safety. Let's not start nickel and dime this. We're way under it now. These people are very dedicated. They deserve our support, and please, let's give it to them this morning. Thank you.
Thanks. So any further discussion on the police department wages and salaries line item? So all those in favor of amending that number from $3,888,851 to $3,228,258, please raise their pink cards. Those opposed? That is carried. We now move to fire department wages and salaries from $1,968,680 to $2,039,680. Sir?
Thanks again, Mr. Moderator. Lawrence Holesworth, Fountain Drive. I have, just have a question on this line item. I understand that our fire department has been severely understaffed, particularly on the emergency response side of things. Over the summer, there were, I understand those, those guys were, those folks were working their tails off. I just wanted to understand whether this increased budget amount is to take care of hiring some additional staff or, or what, what the, what the intention is there because it sounds like we really need some additional folks on that team.
So I, I hear specifically a question about whether it's going, it's for hiring additional staff, but you also want a more general question of what the increase will go to?
No, that basically covers it. I'm just, just sort of painting the picture as to why I was asking the question. That was all.
Okay, so, so your question is whether this increase in funding will result in increased staff?
Correct.
Thank you. This increased funding will let us replace one person that retired on August 15th that we were not able to replace. So the staff will increase at that point and also allow us to hire one more personnel in, in January. It'll give us enough funding for six months of the fiscal year. So we will basically get two additional personnel with this.
Thanks. Anyone who doesn't know, that is our fire chief, Brian Legendra. So any further discussion of the motion, the line item, fire department wages and salaries? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise their pink cards. Those opposed? That is carried. We now move to Westport Community Schools. The motion is to amend the, the appropriation of $18,590,895 to $19,096,102. Is there someone who would like to speak to that? Ma'am?
Yes, I know that the purpose of this town meeting has been to appropriate a $1.1 million windfall from the state. The amount here is almost half of that, $500,000. My question becomes, my question becomes, what, and I know this body is not to micromanage the school department. I know that they've got their line items and that, that they manage themselves between the school committee and the school officials. But being that said, $500,000, $500,000 is a huge amount compared to what the other departments are getting, and I'm by no means saying that each department should be equalized because they all have their own needs. My question becomes, and you just answered a similar question with, from the previous, previous person at the mic, is this money going to be used for staffing, or is it going to be applied to the campground note? And let me finish on that, because the campground note, the funding for the campground was approved by town meeting to be a debt inclusion. In my book, and what I learned about debt inclusions, was that's robbing from Peter to pay Paul. In other words, taking from the town budget and putting it towards something else that you need to pay for. So my question becomes, is this $500,000 going to be used to reduce the note on the campground as opposed to the debt inclusion that was already approved by town meeting in 2019 for fiscal 2021 budget?
So your question is, will this additional funding be used to reduce the debt on the campground purchase?
Yes.
Mr. Carrero?
Through you, Mr. Speaker, to the, to the person at the mic. The, the appropriation that, the total appropriation that was given to us for a million dollars when we reduce, I'll just go back a little bit, reduce the revenues, now we're here at town meeting to appropriate that in this article. We on the Finance Committee asked the same question that the speaker is asking. The, and we, we got the information from the school department. This is not to go, not a dimer, this is going towards the campground.
Okay, so, so the answer to her question is no?
Right.
Okay, no.
The other question I have in that regard then, and I've read in the newspapers, and I don't know how accurate they are, but one of the, one of the purposes of this, I mean, one of the uses of this $500,000 could be used for staffing and teachers because apparently when the budget was approved at the July town meeting, some teachers had to be let go. Now, my comment on that was, is that with this pandemic and virtual learning, and we only had 47 graduates in the class of 2020 in Westport High School, why do we need more teachers? If anything, you should be paying parents who have to educate their kids at home.
The, the question, do we need more teachers, doesn't really have anything to do with this, that...
You, you know, you're asking for $500,000 here, an increase of $500,000 from what was already approved in July. From what was already approved in July.
It is not time up yet.
I know I'm, I'm a fish out of water here amongst all you people that are money, money, money. Let's just...
No, I'm going to ask you to stop characterizing anyone else here, because we're not going to characterize you.
You must characterize me.
The same courtesy, you're going to have to sit down.
Okay. I'm asking a question.
Okay, what is your question, please?
The question is, why are you getting such a disproportionate, appropriate amount for the $1.1 million windfall towards the schools when parents are teaching their kids at home? We were also told that parents who want to teach their kids at home or educate their, I should say indoctrinate their children at home, whatever term you want to use, tomato, tomato, repair, replace. You can get a approved DESE learning platform and an assigned facilitator. Those aren't teachers. That's teaching at home. Why $500,000 increase for that? I'm asking you the question. Why $500,000? What's it going to be used for?
You have, you have five seconds left, and your question ran for about 25 seconds, so I don't understand it.
You're using my time. You're using my time. So what is this $500,000 going to be used for? Tell us.
Is that a question?
Yes, yes. That's a question.
Please stop interrupting me.
You interrupt me.
I have the right to interrupt you, and it's my duty to interrupt you in certain situations. And so you have a question, what, what the money is going to be used for?
Exactly.
Okay, your time is up. Please have a seat, and I will ask if I can find someone to give us a brief response to how this money is going to be used. Mr. Robin?
Good morning, everyone. I apologize. Thank you very much. Good morning, everyone. First of all, I want to thank the Select Board, Tom Orban, Ten Brookside Avenue, Westport. I want to thank the Select Board and the Finance Committee for their support of the schools with the $500 and $5,000 of transfer. The positions that we are applying for, we're going to use with that money, we're going to hire two IT people. One obviously realizes that with the number of remote learners that we currently have and the increase in the number of Chromebooks that we have purchased and all of the software and hardware, that we need additional people to help provide supports for our students who, despite the fact we're desperate to get back into school, we're trying to provide the world-class education that they so richly deserve at home until such time that we can get them back. Additionally, we are hiring both a guidance counselor over at the West. Our current guidance counselor is responsible for over 440 students. The recommendation by the American Society of School Counselors is 250 per guidance counselor, so we're clearly above that. Additionally, we're going to be hiring a adjustment counselor. Everybody is quite aware that as a result of the pandemic, the opioid situation, and many other factors, we're looking at a, a number of families and students who really need additional helps, help beyond just the whole school day and the curriculum. The fact of the matter is, regardless of what we do in terms of curriculum and everything else, without our students being mentally well, we're going to have students who are struggling. Additionally, based on the data that was, that was coming from the 2019 MCAS data, we had a, a real deficiency in mathematics. Our current average class ratio, teacher to student ratio in ninth grade is one to 27, so we're looking to reduce that by adding another mathematics teacher. And I hope I'm not forgetting anybody, but I just want to thank the community. I want to thank the Select Board, and I want to thank FinCom for providing our teachers, who I am, I want to say clearly, are working exceedingly hard to provide the great quality education that I think that we provide our kids. And I want to thank you very much for the time to speak.
Ms. Priestner?
Tracy Priestner, Old Palm Road. I'd like to speak to the previous, previous speaker's comment regarding the split of the revenue that has come into town. It does represent a 54% split because that's the split between the town side and the school side. That represents the incremental expenses.
Nancy Stanton-Cross, a member of the school committee and a resident of Westport. The school department was reduced by $1.1 million as a result of this pandemic. The budget, and I appreciate the FinCom, the Select Board supporting the schools to get this additional money. It is not a windfall. It is the additional money for an FY20 level-funded budget given by the state. It's not a windfall. Every department, the school system, the fire department, the police department, the town offices, we are all underfunded as a result of this pandemic and the lack of tax revenues in this state. The teachers have done an extraordinary job educating our children. They're our parents, and they've done an extraordinary job. And guardians, not savvy in technology, that are all pitching in and doing the best that we can where we stand. This money is needed for the school department. We need to hire personnel. We need to hire IT. We're still a half a million dollars short of what we asked for back in the day before COVID hit. So I will tell you that I am mindful about fiscal responsibility. I think the town is owed as taxpayers to know that we're spending the money and allocating it in the best places. All I can tell you right now is it's clearly not enough to deal with this pandemic and support our staff and students coming into the school system safely. But we're doing the best we can, and I think we're rocking it at this point. So I ask you to please vote for this budget allocation. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to call the question.
Thank you. So again, we have a motion to call the question. I trust you all recall that if you now vote yes, that means we will stop discussion and proceed directly to a vote on the line item we're considering. So, and a no vote would mean that you would like discussion to continue because you need more information to make a decision. So, all those in favor of calling the question, please raise your pink cards. Thank you. Those opposed? That is carried by a clear two-thirds majority. So we now proceed to a vote on amending our appropriation for Westport Community Schools from $18,590,895 to $19,096,102. All those in favor, please raise their pink cards. Those opposed? That is carried. And that was easy stuff. Now, Article Three, "To see if the town will vote to amend its bylaws and regulations," Article 69 as described in the article. The gentleman who is going
I move that the town amend its bylaws and regulations by deleting the following language in bylaw Article 69, prohibition of non-medical marijuana establishments.
Can you speak a little more directly into the microphone?
Sure.
Thanks.
6901. All so-called medical marijuana establishments, subject of a provisional certificate of registration by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, in a so-called letter of non-opposition by the town of Westport on or before January 1st, 2020, for location within the town of Westport, shall be exempt from the provisions of Article 69 and be allowed to operate as a recreational marijuana establishment in addition to a medical marijuana establishment.
Thank you. Is there a second? We have a motion, a second. We have the Finance Committee's recommendation, please.
Mr. Moderator, Finance Committee recommends no affirmative action, six to two on the motion.
Thank you. So we have a pre-arranged presentation. Would the person making that presentation like to step to the mic? So you should all have a handout that summarizes this presentation. I encourage you to refer to that now.
Good morning, everybody. I know we have a short time, so I'm going to move through this pretty quickly. If you have any questions, I welcome them afterwards. Just before we go into the article, history on the voting on articles that are affected in this town. In 2016, there was a statewide vote in favor of limited adult use of marijuana. The town put a moratorium in place and then voted on that via ballot in April of 2018. And they voted to put prohibition in place 57% to 43%, 1,629 voters overall. A month later, at the annual town meeting, the Westport residents again voted in favor of prohibition, 59% to 41%, about 200 voters. A year later, in May of 2019, the town voted to put a ban in place on craft marijuana facilities by majority vote. And then most recently in February, a few bylaws were passed allowing Article Three. Mr. Moderator, do you want me to continue on to Article Four topics?
I would prefer that we stick with Article Three in keeping with our, our rule that we talk about one thing at a time.
Perfect.
And I realize that there's some overlap here, so if you really need to make a point, I can allow... I can allow a little bit of stray here, but not a lot. Thanks. Okay, sure. That's a good example of a point of privilege right there, where he can rise and interrupt a speaker because he was having a difficult time hearing him. So I'm going to ask you, yeah, you may want to take the mask off for this purpose, thanks.
Okay, perfect. My apologies. So in February of 2020, the article as mentioned in our Article III was passed, allowing a non-medical facility to participate in, a medical facility, I apologize, to participate in non-medical marijuana activities, recreational cultivation possibly. What a vote in favor of Article III means, it would remove the special exemption permit for medical marijuana establishments in town, which currently is only one active license. And it would remove a bylaw that only one company could ever qualify and benefit from. It does tie into our next article because the next article speaks about prohibition as a whole. This would create an inconsistency if three was not voted yes, but four was. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bernal? Now have a presentation up to 10 minutes from an opposing point of view. And some of you will have a green handout. I don't believe there were enough for everyone, but those of you who have a green handout, you may refer to that because that relates to what Mr. Bernal will be telling us.
Thank you, good morning, and thank everybody for coming out today and have your voices heard. My name is Diego Bernal, I'm a resident, I'm a professor, and I'm a co-owner of Coastal Healing. I'm here to provide you some clarification on what the Article III is, who it is really going to affect. As we heard the petitioners, Article III is going to change our bylaws. A yes vote of the Article III will prevent any approved medical marijuana establishment to operate as a non-medical establishment. A vote no on Article III will leave the bylaws unchanged. I'm here to encourage you to vote no on III, let me explain why. How many approved medical marijuana establishments does Article III apply to? The reality is that only one. Why is that? Because there are two requirements to apply for Article III. The first one is to have a letter of non-opposition before a certain date, January 1, 2020, for location within the Town of Westport. The second one is that you also have a provisional certificate of registration with the state, that's the license with the Cannabis Control Commission, on or before January 1, 2020, for location within the Town of Westport. Back in 2017, when medical facilities approached town, two of them got a letter of non-opposition. So I know people have said there are some monopolies, no, that's not true. Multiple companies approached the town, only one continued to pursue the provisional certificate with the state, and they got that approved for a site located on State Road. Therefore Coastal Healing is the only medical establishment to which this proposed article applies to. We're not doing it as a monopoly. We've had three years to get to this point, anybody could have done it just like we did. Who is Coastal Healing? People need to know who we are. The two owners of Coastal Healing are Westport taxpayers. I'm a resident of Westport, my kids went to Westport, high school, not just a year or two, since kindergarten. The teachers here hopefully remember my kids, hopefully in a positive way. Yeah, but we've been here for a while. I am therefore aware of how beautiful Westport is, what we have, and what we need. We chose to come to Westport, we chose to bring our business to Westport. I would assume that if anybody here has their own business and you're trying for four years to get it started, and you have a bylaw that's going to affect you directly, that you would be standing exactly where I'm standing right now. I don't think it's any surprise that you would do it because it might affect directly what you're trying to do. I met with the petitioners last week, talking about Article III, trying to reach a middle ground with them, try to get common ground with them, and to understand what they're really trying to do and what their concerns are, so we could not be at a special town meeting and have everybody get all flustered up. While their concerns about the non-medical establishment coming to Westport are really valid, they're really kind of clear that their concerns are with zoning, where they can go, where they cannot go, how is that regulated? You know, we asked them if their concerns were with us in State Road, and they said no, yet here we are. Members of the Select Board have had a lot of time, and the town has had a lot of time to think about these rule changes. You know, I know there was a change in February, but that was after years of non-action on the non-medical side. You know, the town put a pause button, but they never kind of addressed it, so we did in February. Also, members of the Select Board and the Town Council have voiced some concerns about what's going to happen if we pass these bylaws and they do not match the zoning laws, something really important to think about. But unfortunately, here we are, and Article III is directly affecting us. Our journey has been super long, almost four years of getting here. In fact, we began when there was no non-medical available, so we didn't have this in our target from the beginning. We met with the Select Board, letter of non-opposition, we've secured our location in the right zoning district, we've undergone our special permit site plan review with the Planning Board, we've gotten their feedback on traffic, on parking, on water management, water treatment, odor, security, and please go to the Planning Board and review the files, so you understand what we've done and how we've worked with the Planning Board. Since February, we've been in town with Town Administrator, working on our host agreement. We've been negotiating that with Town Administrator to really put a legal binding document with the town of what we're going to provide to the town, no ifs, ands, or buts. It's going to be on paper, and we have to respect it to operate in the town. And we're finally under construction, which I'm really, really happy to. I also want to address one thing that's been kind of back and forth. If we incur a specific cost on the town as a business, the host agreement and the town has made it very clear that we're going to pay for that, not the town. So we have really done everything right. We have gotten all the town approvals moving forward, yet this article is going to kind of, you know, change what we can and cannot do. So what are the benefits of Westport? I know many of you have heard them, but I'm going to say it one more time to be clear. There's a specific local tax that we will pay to the Town of Westport. That specific tax can be matched with negotiations with the state, between the town and the state, so it's maybe a 6% tax revenue from our business. We have increased the site, I'm sorry, we have improved the site, renovated the site, our property is going to go on from a value, we're going to pay a big amount of property taxes. We're hiring local construction crews already, we're going to hire and work with local vendors as much as we can, we're going to offer jobs to locals, we have a priority of that, we've already been contacted by locals, we're offering jobs and we're talking to them. So we're here, and we want this town to benefit from this business. The Finance Committee unanimously approved this in February, because they understood how much good we could bring as a non-medical facility. We just heard a shortage of money from this school committee, we can't solve the problems, but we can definitely help. Our facility is going to be built, and it's going to open as a medical facility. We're committed to remain a medical facility, but it's very expensive to remain a medical facility only, and being non-medical is going to be a very, sort of a guarantee that we can remain a medical. We're not going to change our footprint, we're not changing what we do and how we do it, we're already doing that, we're just expanding what we do. The only change is going to be that we're going to provide extra tax revenue for the town if we go non-medical. In regards to zoning, there have been a lot of the zoning issues raised, we have not heard specific zoning arguments against Coastal Healing because we've already passed the Planning Board. So people have told us, you're in the right zone, you're where we want you to be, yet here we are right now. If there are concerns about zoning, let's try to fix those concerns about zoning the proper way by addressing zoning bylaw changes, not by doing this general bylaw change. Again, I want to remind you that we're a local business, you know, the founders are locals, our investors are angel investors that put all their faith in us, our family and friends. There's no outside interest, there's no big group, it's us, it's local. If anybody here wants to talk to us and participate in our business, come and approach us. You know, for all these reasons, and I can go on forever, but I'm running out of time, I encourage you to vote no on this because we have done what we had to do. And if there's concerns about where future business should go, then let's address those particularly. No matter how you vote, I really thank you for being here and, you know, showing, having your voices heard, this is what we need. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion of the motion under Article III? Sir?
Good morning. My name's Michael P. Sullivan, I'm a resident on 1380 Drift Road in Westport. Been involved in the Town of Westport for, I'm new in town, 30 years. But I'm rising in opposition to this Warren article for a variety of reasons. First, I'd like to point out a previous speaker, that's a presentation that is lacking in total factual information. Number one, when the state did pass legalizing marijuana, the Town of Westport voted in favor in terms of, at the ballot. I'd like to go ahead to last February's town meeting, oh, this February's town meeting, excuse me. I was at that meeting when there was various questions addressing medical and non-medical marijuana. I think it's been clarified in the past that those are the two criterias that the Cannabis Control Commission are addressing. We don't use, they don't use the term recreation, it's medical and non-medical marijuana. I can speak to the medical because I am a holder of the medical marijuana cod for the past three or four years. It costs individuals $300 a year to see a doctor and have it registered, to be able to go to a dispensary and pick up an appropriate medication for their condition. It's matched up with a medical physician who specializes in identifying solutions for their health concern. I've had to travel to, initially it was Plymouth, now I have to stand in lines in Fall River if I can get into their parking lot. And the reason for the problems that we hear about in Fall River is the creation of a plan that didn't have appropriate planning. I'd like to finish my comments in thanking our town government from the start of this medical and non-medical marijuana question that came into our state many years ago. The Town of Westport proceeded very slowly and methodically, and certainly the Planning Board, in creating regulations and guidelines that have been consistently applied. Many of the businesses that have approached Westport chose not to pursue it, international businesses based in Canada, national businesses, the economic impact of companies that are making money here and going elsewhere. Right now, the one license holder and the one applicant for marijuana establishments in Westport are local companies. There's certainly a benefit to that. This is an industry that's well-regulated by the state. The impact is to make it available to those who choose to use it, whether it be for medical or non-medical uses, but it also controls the distribution of cannabis so that it's not in the hands of those that should not have it, similar to alcohol and cigarettes. And certainly, I always felt that those laws and regulations were a benefit to helping get drugs off the street for those that feel it's a gateway drug. Legalizing marijuana, besides the financial implications, gets it off the street. So I want you to consider those that need or want to choose legally to use marijuana. Lastly, I want to speak to the positive aspects of the way the state has set it up, the tremendous tax revenues that will come into Massachusetts that currently we are not receiving because we don't have any sales taking place. I would urge on question three to vote no, I believe that the current Planning Board, Board of Selectmen, there's a process in place for them to bring forward changes that may be needed going ahead. This is not the right change. The presentation that you have in front of you has many facts that are missing and mischaracterizations of what took place, so I just want you to-
20 seconds remaining.
And with that 20 seconds, I want to please ask that you recognize those that were in attendance in February of 2020 that made decisions for this town, so take very seriously your vote whether if you're going to reverse the previous legislation that was put in place.
Thanks, time. Well timed, that was exactly five minutes. Please?
226 Old Harbor Road, Cecilia Delgado.
Will you speak directly into the microphone, please? Thanks.
226 Old Harbor Road, Cecilia Delgado. I speak in support of Article III. I was going to ask about the AAA study that focused on Washington State's 10-year period of increase in fatalities, but after reading Coastal Healing's green handout, I was concerned with some of the misinformation. I want to ask you, Mr. Moderator, Town Council, Selectmen, Finance Committee, has anyone spoken to the Cannabis Commission about Coastal Healing's application?
So I can direct that question to whoever you would like me to.
Has anyone?
Do you want to know if anyone-
Has anyone? My reason for asking the question is I spoke to the Cannabis Control Commission within the last week, I spoke to the office manager twice to clarify it, I was told there is nothing in the database at all about any application for any marijuana facility in Westport, Mass.
So do you still want to-
I want to know if someone has. I would love to see it.
So is there anyone from the Board of Selectmen, the Town Administrator, et cetera, who can speak to having contacted the Cannabis Control Commission about Coastal Healing? Mr. King?
No, we wouldn't have any reason to contact.
I know, you-
Please, 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 please.
I thought it was the answer. He walks away. So I'm asking you.
I answered the question.
Please, stop. Both of you, stop. God, I hate raising my voice to this stuff. Would you just stop the first time I ask? You don't talk and back and forth to one another, and you see exactly why we don't allow that. So do you have a question you would like me to pass on to Mr. King?
I have a question for the town. How is it-
The town cannot answer a question. There are individuals here who can.
I'm asking the Town Council, Mr. Moderator, how is it that Coastal Healing is building a marijuana facility that is now under the guise of recreational, without the Cannabis Control Commission having any knowledge of it? I know, I understand what he said, because the host agreement has to be in place before the application is finished. However, are you also aware, Mr. Council, that the House has already passed a bill, which is now in the Senate, that says we would like to do away with the host community agreement? There is no shortage of lobbyists for the cannabis groups.
Are you addressing a question? Would you like me to address a question to a particular individual?
I did. I said to the Town Council.
So you have a question for Town Council? Will you please summarize your question again?
Yes. Are you aware there's a bill in committee?
I'm not going to pass on, whether Town Council is aware of that or not is not germane to this topic at all.
Is it important that the town be aware that the host community agreement and the safety impact study and so forth that's being done may be moot because of what's going on with the state? And are the people here aware that that money that comes in is only for five years? Three years, I believe, on the other.
Okay, so I'm still struggling to understand a question that I can pass on to him that has, you know, what he's aware of and what he isn't really germane to this. What one person thinks is important or another isn't really germane to this. But if you have a factual question that you would like me to pass on him, I would be happy to do that.
Does he follow the host community lobbying going on in the state, which could affect our town?
His activities are not germane to this. Do you have a fact question you would like to ask him?
No further questions, I think it's evident.
Sir?
Good morning.
Oh, Chief Pelletier.
How are you? So I'd just like to preface saying my concerns with this article are not so much-
Can you tell, anyone who doesn't know this, I'm Chief of Police.
My name is Keith Pelletier, and I am your Chief of Police.
So we have a request, then you speak more directly into the microphone, please?
Sure. So my concerns with this article are not so much with the Route 6 basin- So first, I'd like to thank all the citizens of Westport who took the time to come here today to listen, possibly speak, and vote on this very important issue of marijuana in our neighborhoods. I'm not here to lecture adults about marijuana use in their own homes, that's their business. I'm here to say that not only as your chief, but as a town resident, I feel like we were lied to. It's my opinion. We were led to believe that medical marijuana for those people who had ailments such as cancer, arthritis, et cetera, would be treated on Route Six by an appointment-only medical facility. The reality is that the need for medical marijuana must not have been such a priority because they never built that facility. That facility didn't get built until they felt that they could sell recreational marijuana, which tells me it isn't about helping people, as we were led to believe it's about money, big money. Big tobacco companies in the 1930s said smoking was healthy for you. They even had doctors on their payrolls to testify to that fact. They dispensed cigarettes to vulnerable captivated populations on every corner in stores and vending machines. They product placed them in movies and on TV. The results were hundreds of thousands of people addicted to smoking and ultimately developing major health issues, including death, and then resulting in billion-dollar lawsuits. Most recently, vaping was marketed as being a healthy alternative to smoking, until otherwise healthy kids started turning up in emergency rooms with life-threatening breathing conditions. Now, the new big tobacco, the multi-billion-dollar marijuana industry, is following the same playbook. And I don't want you to believe what I'm saying here today, I want you to fact-check it. I want you to go on the internet and do some quick internet searches. You can see all these things are there. The industry is targeting the middle class with craft cannabis, leading us to believe it's homegrown and healthy. They are marketing our children with marijuana-laced cookies, brownies, gummy bears, and other candies. Sure, you have to be 21 to buy them, but how hard is it to get an older sibling or friend? We're seeing that out on the street, on motor vehicle stops, we're seeing kids with candy that's laced with marijuana. And now they're threatening our neighborhoods. Past experience has shown we'll be subjected to noxious odors, increased traffic and noise, and increased crime. Again, do a quick internet search, you can see all the crime that's taken place in Colorado and California. The police department is seeing an increase in mysterious accidents, where people just seem to fall off the road and hit telephone poles. Look up and down Route Six, you can see all the broken poles that are still there. Up and down Sodom Road and your side roads, Drift Road. People are just seemingly falling off the road. That doesn't just happen. And I'm sad to speak about what happened a few weeks ago. A beautiful young girl died. And the person who hit that girl, when we spoke to her, said they didn't even remember hitting her, didn't even remember hitting that car, but he did admit to smoking marijuana a few hours before then. But you know, there's no real test for marijuana in someone's system? So it's not like you get in an accident and you've been drinking. We can give you a breath test, we can give you a reasonable opportunity to show that you're either intoxicated or not. There is no real test for marijuana in your system right now, at least as far as we're concerned as police officers. So we're handcuffed, we're not ready, the town's not ready for recreational marijuana. So ultimately, it's up to you, the voter, on what type of Westport you want to live in. One where marijuana is literally on every corner in neighborhood, or a Westport with a common sense approach with proper zoning. Please vote for a common sense approach. Listen to what the Planning Board has said.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Sullivan behind that mask?
Yes. Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mike Sullivan, R. Michael Sullivan, Cherry and Web Lane. And I'd just like to point out that in accordance to what the early presenter said, over 2,000 people have cast votes in 2018 and 2019 on this very issue. In each of those three votes, by a majority, a significant majority, prohibition was adopted by our town. Now, this was all upended, and we're here today because at a special town meeting in February, a much smaller, a comparatively much smaller group of people had a majority vote to change the rules. And the problem here is not so much that, it was legal, it was certainly legal. It was a little opportunistic, I would say, and the fact of the matter is, it was done in such a way as to prevent the Planning Board, our Planning Board, who normally presents us, this body, with excellent zoning regulation to go along with major changes like this, they were hamstrung from doing that. So we were stuck with whose zoning, and that was the proponent zoning, and this little special rule about the one company. I'm very glad to hear from the presenter earlier that represents the company that their business interest is not going to be affected. They will be proceeding with the medical marijuana, and I think that for some of us who feel like this is an ex post facto change, it really isn't. They don't have a host agreement yet to do non-medical marijuana. So we're not taking anything away from anybody. The only way to straighten out this problem is for us to vote yes on both of these articles and give the Planning Board the opportunity to put in front of this board next summer proper zoning regulation that we can consider for this change. So I would ask all of us, all of you, to vote with me in favor of both Article Three and Article Four. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next.
Carol Brownlee, Massey Syd Road. I just have a technical question. I've heard conflicting reports, and would ask Town Council or other suited town representatives, if there is a conflict potentially in the way we would vote between Articles Three and Four, whether a yes or no vote one way or the other on Three could impact the results of how we should vote on Four.
I don't see any way that, can you phrase that differently? I mean, how you vote on Article Three, regardless of how you vote on Article Three, you can vote any way you want on Article Four. So I'm not sure I'm getting what your question is.
Yeah, I guess the question is whether or not an Article one way or the other on Three would obviate the possibility to vote a certain way on Four.
I'm still not understanding your question. So if the body votes affirmatively on Article Three, then we will strike the language that you see in the motion under Article Four. I'm sorry, under Article Three. Then, under Article Four, we would change the wording of, what, Article 69, Section 6901, as it says there?
So a vote in favor on Three would require a change in the wording on the article referenced in Four, is that what you're saying?
No, no, that they would, they're both worded the way they're worded in the warrant. I'm trying to understand what you're getting at, so I can pass on your question, but I don't understand. Are you saying that, are you asking, does a particular vote on Article Three have a legal impact on Article Four?
Yes.
Okay. Well, our Town Council finds his way through the flag to answer that question?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Can you guys hear? Yeah, there we go. Through you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Jeffrey Blake, and I'm from KP Law, your Town Council. If you might indulge me for a second, Mr. Moderator, thank you guys very much for having me out here. It looks like a huge turnout, and I'm always happy to see that, to see our government in action. Your question is, to be perfectly honest with you, I'm a little bit confused about it. I don't think a yes vote on, or a no vote on Article Three would have any bearing or would prevent a no vote or yes vote on Article Four.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Thanks. Sir?
Thank you, Town Moderator. My name is Jake McWiggen. I'm on 397 Drift Road. I'm also a member of the Conservation Commission here in town. I think we're here today because of a process that I think went slightly wrong. We had 60% of the residents in Westport voting down recreational or non-medical marijuana sales in town. Unfortunately, at a town meeting in February, as has been discussed, we had a situation where probably less than 100 people made a decision to permit non-medical marijuana establishments in town. So why are we here today? Because the zoning that was put in place by that Planning Board in 2018 was never officially put in place because there was a prohibition in town. Obviously, you're not going to put zoning in if you're not allowed to do it. And what happened in February was one company with their representatives came to town meeting, removed the prohibition, and then the next article essentially removed all the zoning restrictions that Planning Board had worked on in the past. We're talking about setbacks from property lines from 50 feet down to 25 and 10 feet. We're dealing with putting facilities in on Main Road, which is now, it's essentially commercial from Village Garage all the way down to Cornell Road. And this is not an issue of battling between Northwest Port and Southwest Port. At the end of the day, will it really impact me where I'm at? It probably could if you had craft cultivators come in, which essentially had even less zoning requirements. So that's why I got involved. I don't think we need our residents here in town, I don't think we need our children to be waiting by the bus stop and having issues with traffic, parking, and various other things with these establishments. And just so everyone knows, the establishment on Route Six came in as a medical marijuana facility, legally under the town and the bylaws in the state of Massachusetts. Allegedly, they are moving forward to get their non-medical license. But what we want as residents, I believe, is to put in essentially a moratorium so that the zoning, remember, the Planning Board are elected officials. Your elected officials were essentially sidetracked, and it was done by one individual representing one company in town. And just so you remember, the zoning originally had limits on the facilities that could go into place. We're talking 10,000 square feet. There's no limits now. So take a look at Freetown, I believe they have a 1 million square foot facility. So to somebody, for someone to say we're a local business, we're local investors, that's all well and good for that one establishment. But what about the rest of Main Road? What about the rest of 177 and other places? Remember, we spent a lot of time approving this school right here in Westport. The facility that could go on Wildberry Way is less than 900 feet from the well that they're going to be drilling. Remember, this year, we have difficulty watering our lawns and have concerns about our wells. Imagine a facility going in there pulling 5,000, 10,000 gallons of water out a day. It's not going to work. Zoning had it right, planning had it right, we want to go back to that. And I do have some other questions, but I may address that on Article Four. But I thank you, I thank you for everyone coming out, and it's not an argument about the legality of marijuana. It is an argument of protecting Westport, protecting our rural nature, and at the end of the day, putting in there where they're correct and belong. Thank you.
Then, Mr. Leach?
Sean Leach, Division Road, I'd like to call the question.
Okay. So I think we know now what a motion to call the question means. A yes vote means that you have heard enough discussion and you are prepared to make a vote, cast your vote on the motion under Article Three, a no vote means you would like discussion to continue. So all those in favor of calling the question will please raise their pink cards. Those opposed? That is carried by a clear two-thirds majority. So we now move to a vote on the motion under Article Three. All those in favor of the motion under Article Three will please raise their pink cards? Yes? Okay. There's a question, does this have to be a two-thirds vote? No, it does not. Zoning bylaws require a two-thirds vote, general bylaws are a simple majority. Everybody ready to vote? Okay. Those in favor of the motion under Article Three will please raise their pink cards? Yes? Okay. There's a question, does this have to be a two-thirds vote? No, it does not. Zoning bylaws require a two-thirds vote, general bylaws are a simple majority. Everybody ready to vote? Okay. Those in favor of the motion under Article Three will please raise their pink cards? Those opposed? That is carried. Article Four, to see if the town will overturn its bylaws and regulations, Article 69, Section 6901, as described in the article. May I have a motion, please? Oh, and we need a motion verbatim. And by the way, this motion is going to be made slightly differently from what you see in your warrant. If you look at the motion language there, it says, the current bylaw reads "regulation of non-medical marijuana establishments," not prohibition. So the motion language you're going to hear is going to differ slightly from what you see in your warrant. So-
I move the town amend its bylaws and regulations known as Article 69, Regulation of Non-Medical Marijuana Establishments, 6901, by deleting the following language. Consistent with Mass General Law Chapter 94G, all types of non-medical marijuana establishments shall be regulated by the Town of Westport in the same manner as the town regulates medical marijuana facilities, or in any other manner prescribed by the zoning bylaws of the Town of Westport, and shall be subject to the same limitations and requirements established by zoning bylaws of the Town of Westport. And replacing it with, consistent with Mass General Law Chapter 94G, Section 3A2, all types of non-medical marijuana establishments, defined for purposes of this bylaw as the term marijuana establishments, is defined in MGL Chapter 94G, Section 1, to include marijuana cultivators, independent testing laboratories, marijuana product manufacturers, marijuana retailers, or any type of licensed marijuana-related business shall be prohibited within the Town of Westport.
Thank you. Is there a second? Motion, a second. May I have the Finance Committee recommendation, please?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends no affirmative action, 62 on the motion.
Thank you. Would you like to begin discussion?
Yes. So part of the presentation that was truncated on Article Four, Mr. Moderator, can I present that now?
Please.
Okay. So what a vote for yes on Article Four does is it puts prohibition of all non-medical marijuana establishments back in place. Why is that critical? First reason I want to cover it is host community agreements. Currently, the governing document that the town can use, it's a document between the marijuana establishment and the town, and the contents of it are what the town can basically govern. The rest falls under the Cannabis Control Commission, the operations of the facility, that kind of thing. As I believe Cecilia indicated, there is a-
A previous speaker.
Previous speaker, I apologize, I am a rookie. There is a bill in the state senate that was passed overwhelmingly in the state house that would give oversight and enforcement of host community agreements to the Cannabis Control Commission. Part of that is to make sure there's no fraudulent activity, but the language does not limit it to that. So that, if passed through the senate, will remove one of the protections the town could control. The second, and I'm not going to beat a dead horse, Jake, the previous speaker did a great job in talking about the zoning that was there and what changed. It's the only protection the town has currently, is to get that zoning right. This article does not specifically address zoning, but it does give the Planning Board the time it will need to make a careful consideration to the zoning that should be in place, should prohibition be voted back to be repealed. Quick clarification on taxes collected for our town. There is a marijuana local tax that is 3% of retail sales. That is only retail, not cultivation, not craft cannabis, only retail. And of that retail pie, that only affects products that are sold that have marijuana in them. So any revenue from merchandise, smoking accessories, rolling papers, that kind of thing, is not part of that 3% pie, just a level set. The second, the community impact fee. That is a reimbursement fee to the town, that is not a revenue stream. That is for expenses the town may incur in supporting the business, could be police details, possible traffic study, maybe a stoplight that's specifically for that business. They can recoup up to the amount of 3% of gross sales from that- They can recoup up to the amount of 3% of gross sales from that business. So if they only spend 1%, they can only get 1% back. But if they spend over 3%, they can only get 3% back. They can't get more than that. And that is currently in the host community agreement and for a five-year term. Last thing I want to focus on really is the actual zoning, and it's in your hand now. The proposed zoning bylaws in 2018 were a common sense approach to protect neighborhood and resources in town, and they were made in the event that prohibition did not pass. These articles were ready to go. As previously stated, that didn't happen, so they were put off to the side. At the February 2020 meeting, when introducing the zoning articles, the petitioner indicated they had taken the proposed zoning bylaws from 2018 and made a few minor changes. I'd like to go over those changes as they are in the document. So in the original plan, retail was only allowed in the business district. It did exclude central business district. And everything else, cultivation, product manufacturing, research and testing, was in the Science, Technology and Overlay District, which if you don't know, is on Route 6 as you're heading towards closer to Fall River. Setbacks were put in place that were very generous, and as the previous speaker spoke about, there was a limit on the max square foot of a building. In the current zoning bylaws, and these are the ones that were adopted, that were not prepared by the Planning Board, but the Planning Board did say they met form and function, but did not specifically endorse them. The Science, Technology, Overlay District is now open to any type of business. Craft cultivation is open to any part of town. That wasn't addressed in the previous one because it had not been a part of the vote, essentially. But the real thing I want to call to attention is the business district. It went from having only the retail sales to being open to anything, cultivation, manufacturing, all of that. Layman's terms on the business district, we're talking Main Road from essentially Village Garage to Cornell Road, we're talking 177 Sanford Road to Route 6, and Route 6 up towards Fall River. There are several neighborhoods that are either in that zoning on Route 6 and 177 or abut that zoning. If you're on Forsythia Lane, you're in a housing development off of 177, and you abut the Route 6 side or the 177 side, you could be adversely affected because these establishments can come into town. There is currently a buffer zone in the agricultural district, residential agricultural district, just on craft cultivators. And to be clear, that's five acres and 500 feet from the building on your property, not your property zone, not the end of your property. So they only have to make up the difference to be allowed there. The only buffer that exists beyond that is 500 feet from a private or public school. These are, in my opinion, bylaws that look more like a business plan because they focus on options. The common sense approach that the Planning Board put forth focuses on protections to neighborhoods and natural resources. In closing, projected revenues are just that. They are projections. Data is not released on marijuana facilities that only have one active retailer in town. They can be voluntarily, but there's not a lot out there. If they promise a number, if they promise hundreds of thousands of dollars, there's no recourse to the town once they're in town. They can't, we can't do anything because they didn't make their sales goal, but that's less revenue for the town. Impact on town resources, neighborhoods and schools should always be the paramount concern. Current zoning prioritizes options. Moving forward without taking all of these into account can have long-lasting negative impacts, both environmentally and financially. In the current setup, the Select Board is the gatekeeper of these host community agreements. As I spoke to earlier, that may soon not be the case. They can still sign them, but they may not have enforcement rights. The Select Board has voted to endorse Articles 3 and 4, as has the School Committee at their meeting on Thursday. So I humbly ask for your support on Article 4 to protect the neighborhoods and schools and natural resources in town. Thank you.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes, I think, good morning, maybe afternoon already, but based on where the sun is. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I do have a point of information, then I could get into my five minutes. Is that correct?
There's actually no such thing as a point of information, but you're welcome to ask a question.
Whatever other people got to-
Your questions do-
I wonder about the intent of this meeting and the way it was posted and the recent change. As I had mentioned earlier, the language, if you will, that's in the power presentation, there's a lot of questionable terms used. I'll focus and I'll ask a question through to the Town Council. This meeting was posted as a town meeting to consider prohibition. I will ask the Town Council if changing the term prohibition negates the posting for this meeting because we're not, because we've now changed it to, I believe, use the term legalize, regulate. I don't see that as the same. I know the Attorney General, in being very patient, from 2012 when Massachusetts legalized non-medical marijuana, to now we are eight years later, and Westport has very methodically put in place rules, regulations and zoning to control it to two companies. One who has started to make multimillion dollar investment and one other applicant who's a local business. They're following the guidelines. Yes, they went into a few places, they had open meetings with this Zoom app, that they received input from neighbors and moved on and are seeking the right establishment. If we prohibit, we will be found, first of all, I don't think the meeting follows what was posted. Secondly, if we do in fact prohibit, as we said we were going to do in this notice, the Attorney General has ruled that municipalities cannot prohibit. We will then get to see these multinational corporations starting to stakehold all these locations in your backyard. Right now, you have the two that are willing to work with your community and your neighbors. I would take your vote very seriously because we are considering prohibition because that's what I read on our town meeting notice. So that's the question to the Town Council.
So what is the question? That went on for quite a while.
Okay. Well, if you could repeat your change in opening up question four, that it was, you changed the text from prohibition to what, please?
Okay. It is my call, not Town Council's, whether the motion, because remember, a warrant article asks a question. So the motion we have under Article 4 is a proposed answer to that question. The gist of Article 4 is, are we going to amend our bylaws, Article 69, Section 6901? That's what Article 4 is about. There was simply an error that the, that Article 69 was misrepresented there. It, a long time ago, it read prohibition of non-medical marijuana. In February, we changed it to regulation of non-medical marijuana. So we're simply identifying the bylaw correctly. That motion is what we call within scope, meaning it's within, it's acceptable under that warrant article.
Thank you. So if I understand the question, what was posted, the term prohibition was incorrect. It's been, what you just answered, my question was, it's now regulation.
Correct. It identified the bylaw incorrectly.
My question to the Town Council is, in posting and presenting language dealing with prohibition, and the Attorney General has ruled you, a municipality cannot prohibition, prohibit, excuse me, can a municipality regulate by prohibiting? Do you feel that the Attorney General will allow that as an acceptable regulation to prohibit?
So is your-
Which essentially, Article 4 prohibits. Article 4 prohibits.
So is your question whether he thinks that the Attorney General will find any fault with Article 4?
No.
What is your question then?
If the history of the decisions made by the Attorney General, dealing with other municipalities who have regulated by saying we will prohibit-
You need to, you need to distill that question down. We're over five minutes now, but because we're into this, if you can distill your question down, I will pass it on, but-
Will the Attorney General possibly find fault?
With Article 4? If it, with our adoption of Article 4?
Correct.
Okay. So can you tell us if, in your opinion, the Attorney General will find fault with our bylaws if we adopt the provisions of the motion under Article 4?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Again, my name is Jeffrey Blake, and I'm here from KP Law, your Town Council. In my opinion, as the, as Mr. Moderator indicated, your question is one of scope, and whether or not there may or may not have been a typo in the, in the warrant, I think it was well within Mr. Moderator's scope. If you're asking whether or not the AG would disapprove this bylaw, I think you're asking a question that, I don't know that you've asked the question, but there is an issue out there as to whether or not this by, adoption of this bylaw would then conflict with the zoning bylaw, which allows marijuana in every district. And that's a, that's a question that I'm sure the AG will have strong cautions about.
So, but in the sense, the question that you asked, is the AG going to disallow this because of the word prohibition in the warrant, in the warrant article, replaced by the word regulation in the motion? I believe you would say no, correct?
Three, Ms. Moderator, you are correct.
Okay. So-
That wasn't my question. If I could just respond, and I'll sit down.
I'm sorry, you are well over your time at this point, so I have to ask you to perhaps get another turn after others who want to speak have spoken.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I would just like to address what the Attorney Blake was just speaking about, excuse me, Town Council. I do believe I can refer to him.
As Town Council, yes.
As Town Council. This does, what we just passed does create a conflict with our bylaws, with our zoning bylaws.
But let's talk about what we're doing now, because what we've did is done.
And it relates to this. And this article will also create a conflict with our zoning bylaws because in February, we allowed for this to happen, and we, by a two-thirds majority, voted to allow this in our town, in our zoning bylaws. Zoning bylaws supersede town bylaw. And there have already been two cases in Massachusetts where this was the case, where a town voted to allow, passed all the zoning bylaws to allow, and then went and reversed the general bylaw to not allow. And what that created was a conflict between the zoning bylaws and the actual town bylaws. And because the zoning bylaws are passed by a two-thirds majority, they have a stronger weight in the eyes of the court. And this now creates a situation where we likely will be getting a lawsuit from the one petitioner that we had and future petitioners to force us to allow this because our bylaws say we can't allow this. And the only way to change those bylaws is to go back in July, June, or whatever, May, whenever we have our annual town meeting and have proper review of the bylaws through the Planning Board, as was the case with these, and to pass them before town meeting. So by passing this prohibition and by passing the last prohibition that you just passed, you are creating a huge conflict between what our, what our zoning bylaws say and what our town bylaws say. And I wasn't allowed to bring this up at the last, in the last discussion because the question was called before I could bring this up to you. This will create a huge conflict. It will create lawsuits. It will cost the town money. Right now, if we just approve medical for five years, we can get a host community agreement of up to 3% of their sales. That's for five years. That goes away after five years. If there's no retail part of this, no non-medical part of this, that's it. It's gone. The only extra income we get is the property tax on an improved site. And as you've seen, and the previous questions that we passed, the town is in desperate need of finances. The town is in desperate need of income in order to supplement its budgets. Its budgets are going, you know, this year, the state level funded, that's the reason we're here right now. The state said they were going to cut us 20%, and then they turned around and level funded us. How did they do that? They dipped into the rainy day fund. They can't do it again next year. We're going to see massive cuts next year. Any dime that we get would, will help us, but we are, we're going to go bear, I mean, without this and many other things, but without this specifically, there will be, these cuts will be bigger, they'll be harder, and they'll be more sustained. We're looking down a very, very dismal outlook, and I'm sure many on the Finance Committee would agree with me that. We can't expect that the state's going to level fund again next year. There are people in the audience here that may be able to speak to that better, but we've been told, we've been put on notice. And as far as the Select Board supporting this, this was a 3-2 vote, and the Chair of the Select Board did not support it specifically because it makes, creates a conflict of interest with our zoning bylaws. And by doing this, you are inviting all kinds of lawsuits. Our Planning Board did consider this completely. Our Select Board is pretty much four to one on most occasions against non-medical marijuana. This is not, there are protections in place. The bylaws state them, the host community agreement has them, whether or not it gets taken over by the Cannabis Control Commission, it still has to be in place, and we still have to agree to sign it. And we would not, as a board, as all of you have entrusted us, would not sign anything that would put neighborhoods in jeopardy, that would put it in a place where it doesn't belong. We have stated this five to zero unanimously on the board, that we don't agree that it belongs anywhere near Central Village, and that we need to amend the bylaw to state that. Our original proposal had that in the bylaw. Unfortunately, that didn't translate because those weren't the ones that were passed by the Planning Board at the time that this came before it, but we had proposed that. We had proposed bigger setbacks. We can fix this. We can fix this in May. We can do this the right way and not punish a local business for stepping through all the hoops and doing everything right. And I'm sorry, but as a town, if you want to attract business to this town, to flip-flop like this and to do this kind of thing-
You need to finish up. Bring me out of time.
I will. Is, this is, you're stepping on your own feet and you're cutting your own throat.
Thanks.
And I would strongly advise that you vote no on these.
Thanks.
Thank you again, Mr. Moderator. I'm Michael Sullivan, Chair in Webb Lane. This is about prohibition, albeit probably temporary. Okay, let's face it. This is a move to let the Planning Board do their job, which they were prevented from doing back in February. Let's face it, just because a small group of smart people can navigate their way through complicated rules and town meeting, doesn't mean that a couple of hundred people should change the will of the Town of Westport. And it doesn't mean we should give up on our expectation that zoning regulation be completed in a, in a process, in a process that's thoughtful and brings to you rules and regulations that make sense. With regard to threatened legal action, you know what? We'll figure that out, okay? This is a chance to give your Planning Board the chance, the opportunity to do things right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to motion to call the question.
Okay. Any questions on what this means? So a yes vote means you're in favor of ending discussion, a no vote means you like discussion to continue. So all those in favor of calling the question will please raise their pink cards. Those opposed? That is carried by a clear two-thirds majority. We now proceed to a vote on the motion under Article 4. All those in favor will please raise their pink cards. Those opposed? That is carried. Before we address Article 5, which will be quick, I want to take a second to just say a couple of things. I want to thank you all for coming out and cooperating with some of the difficult circumstances. We're getting better at this, but I hope we don't really have to get any better because we don't have to do it again outdoors. But thanks for your cooperation with everybody. But the other thing I want to say is, there were a few mentions in discussion that small groups of people may- groups of people made decisions, and that somehow runs against the will of the town. The people who show up at town meeting decide the kind of town that you get. If you show up, you get a vote and you get to decide these things. If you don't show up, you don't get a vote. And if 30 people show up to town meeting, they will decide, to an annual town meeting, they will decide how every dollar your town has is spent. They will decide your general bylaws. They will decide your zoning bylaws. If you want to say in those things, show up at town meeting, and thank you very much for showing up at this one. So Article 5, to see if the town will amend Article 69 in its bylaws as described in the article. May I have a motion, please, from?
I motion to pass over.
Thank you. Well, a motion to second, a motion to pass over means we would take no action under this article. So any discussion of the motion to pass over?
Finance Committee.
Oh, no, we don't need that.
You don't?
Yeah. So seeing none, all those in favor of passing over Article 5, will please raise their pink cards. Those opposed? That is carried. We pass over Article 5, and may I have a motion to dissolve Westport's special town meeting? Motion second, dissolve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your pink cards. Those opposed? That is carried. We are dissolved. Thank you very much.